Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 14th, 2025, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. Begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. Michelle, would you please call a roll?
Hetzke.
Hetzke here.
Aiken.
Aiken here.
Burton.
Burton here.
Canower.
Canower here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
Wyssar.
Wyssar here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Prinzing.
Prinzing here.
Farigno here.
Okay. We have minutes from the July 31st meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to review them. Can we entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
All right. Those of you visiting, thanks for coming. We have -- this is a public hearing night, and typically, from 6:30 to 7:00, we go through our tabled agenda, and then, once that's done, we move into the public hearing portion of the evening, and then, cover new business after that. So if the tabled items last until 7:00, we'll stop those and go right into the public hearing. Otherwise, we'll move directly into the public hearing as soon as we finish with the tabled items. So Doug, if you want to start going through the tabled agenda?
All right. So first-tabled application is 2051 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, the Chick-fil-A. At the request of the board, staff has drafted a Part II, Part III EAF with a negative declaration pursuant to seeker for the board's review, as well as a draft approval resolution outlining conditions of the board.
And?
Okay. Jim, do you have any -- are you set on this? Comments?
Yep. No concerns at all, having read the EAF, I move to approve.
We have a second?
A second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
We also have a resolution prepared.
And again, having received the variances from the zoning board of review and approvals from the state and county Department of Transportation.
Yes. Well, it's the New York State Department of Transportation.
Yep. I move to approve.
I'll second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Okay.
Thanks. I'll follow up with you guys after the meeting. All right. Tabled application number two. We can kind of combine two and three. 1234 and 1250 Northrup Road, Northrup-Penfield Solar, and 1926 Harris Road, Harris Road One Solar LLC. If you'd like to come up and provide a brief update to the board. So I had in your notes, we have received new plans and new information on Friday that included the glare and glint study that was requested by the board, as well as the noise study that was requested by the board. They also did some additional imaging from some of the neighbors' properties to provide sort of future view of what you would see. And I believe they held their public information meeting last Saturday, if that's correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so all of this information has been provided, but--
Can you hear me at all?
Yeah. Can you speak into the mic, and if you could introduce yourself for the record, Debbie?
I think it was on. Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
Wonderful. My name is Ella DeMayo. I am with Green Spark Solar, representing these two projects. And as Doug mentioned, we responded to all the comments, as well as provided some extra information that we had promised and that we were asked for last week, and it was a lot of information. So we want to give you guys time to review it fully. But I did just want to give you some brief updates on some of the information. One thing that we promised that we would provide was noise analysis studies for both projects. So just a high-level update on those. So the DEC, the lowest range of what they consider ambient noise for a rural resident area, which I would consider both projects, is 45 decibels. For the Harris Road property, at the fence line, not the boundary line, it is 47 dBi, so just two over that. And that is -- the DEC also says that an increase of less than five is considered unnoticedable to intolerable. So for that -- and that doesn't include the trees that are next to them. That is along the north line, so facing Center Court. So just an update on the noise there. And then, for Northrup and the west boundary line, so near Michael's Run and Ariana, at the property line, it is 46 dBi, so one decibel above what is considered ambient noise. And again, that is before all of the trees that are there, which would further dampen the noise. For the glare and glare for Harris Road, it was looked at the Frederick Douglas Airport, Harris Road, Center Court Lane, Sweet Corners, Salt, and Penfield Roads, as well as all of the residential surrounding it. And there was no associated glare found. For Northrup, they looked at the airport, Jackson Road, Plank Road, Fair Point Nine Mile Point Road, Northrup, Robert Michaels Run, Ariana Way, and again, and the surrounding residences, and they found no glare associated. Considering the pad mount versus the pole mount, we are still waiting for confirmation on at least one item for RGNE. So I will update that as soon as I have that information. However, I did send an email a while back with some other things to consider that you guys should have. Photos were taken from the second story, as Doug said. One has been rendered so far. The other ones are with our rendering visual simulation specialist. Their initial feedback was they didn't think that they could render them because they wouldn't see anything. I asked them to look again at the plans and, you know, make sure that they were incorporating tree clearing and all of that. They're taking a deeper look and should get back to us this -- or next week. I will update you guys once that is confirmed. A couple of things of note. We have surveyed both the water main and an RGNE gas line on the Northrup Road project near the access road. That was not -- that information was not available in the last plan set, so there still may be a little bit of shifting in that road. We'll let you know if that's necessary. The fire marshal had no concerns about loading of the access roads or any of that. As Doug said, we had a community information session on Saturday. It was scheduled for two hours. It lasted for three. We had a lot of really great conversations there. On the Harris Road, we had one neighbor show up. On the Northrup Road project, we had nine neighbors from six different households. That doesn't include the kids. There were a few kids there as well. To all the neighbors on both projects that we have email addresses of, both local -- or both who showed up and who didn't show up, we did send out the information materials to them. We created a video to give the feel and the site and the sound of a site since making a site visit was just going to be too complicated and require too much from the residences and the public. That video, the final edit of it, we're expecting to be next week. I will send that out as soon as it's available. And let me see if I had any other notes. In just in full transparency of the community session, it appears that many of the neighbors were notified, but not all of the neighbors were notified by our mailing on the Northrup Road project. We're still investigating why that was. However, I did have some of their email addresses. I had told them the tentative dates when we were still securing a place to have it. The information did get out, and most of the people who did not get mailings, or most of the people who showed up, were people who didn't get mailings. So the information was passed along, but I did want to be transparent in letting you know that there was some snafu that we still haven't figured out why not everybody got the mailings. But we did -- but we were able to notify them by having some email conversations before and after.
Okay.
All right. Those are my updates. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Perfect.
Yeah. I will review it. Just came in and keep on the review process.
Yeah. Perfect. Well, thank you so much.
Okay.
The neighbors that weren't able to make it, I assume that the dialogue between them and Green Spark is still open?
Yes. Yes. We are willing to meet with anyone. We told the Development to the West, they had mentioned maybe having a meeting where we came out and visited with everyone. We're willing to do that. Our email address is out there. If anybody emails us, we've returned every email we've received so far.
Okay.
Okay.
We're also open to video calls. So whatever is most convenient for everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Want to table?
Yes. So given that I know there was quite a bit of material that's come in just recently that we all really need to look over, I'm going to move that we table this application. And I know the applicant still has some things pending.
Okay. We have a second?
I'll second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Okay.
And that would also be for--
The Harris Road?
Harris Road.
Do you want to move again?
Yeah. I'll move that we table Harris Road.
And I'll second that as well.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Okay. Moving right along.
Tabled application number four, 1150 Penfield Road. So I don't have any new information, formal information for you guys since the public hearing. I've spoken with the project team, and I know that some changes may be coming to the proposed development. I talked through a few things with them. They're partially -- they're looking to avoid having to go to the zoning board for the 50-foot buffer set back to residential. So they're hoping to have new information and new materials submitted to the board here shortly.
Okay. Can we entertain a motion to table?
Can I speak specifically? I'm the project architect. Can I just say a little more details of what you just mentioned?
Sure.
If it's--
So my name is John Paul Piani, and I'm the project architect for SCI Design Group. And Doug and I did speak last week. I've had extensive conversations with the owner about the extent of the development, and the owner has agreed to remove the back building, the meeting building, which is a result of, I think, a lot of confusion in terms of the use of the building, plus budget constraints for the project are certainly starting to become a reality. And I think, having gotten the tabled resolution today, I think this afternoon, and reviewing it quickly, a sizable portion of the issues with the submission are related to that back building. So we're working on documents right now that remove that, and we plan on having them into you guys for review very quickly here, you know, within another day or so.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure that you guys were absolutely clear on the fact that all of that steep slope encumbrance, all of the back building, the use, everything associated with that is being modified right now as we speak.
So on that end, that would eliminate the need for a conditional use permit, since that building was what triggered it.
Okay. Okay.
Excuse me. Have you talked about requesting a side block waiver?
I sent information to Dave Hastings on getting that submitted.
Hopefully tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
My apologies for sort of interloping here, but--
Sorry. Thanks for the update.
Is there any other questions that I can answer, or?
I know there's a big, you know, concern on lighting, and something that we, you know, can potentially help out with some suggestions.
I know the owners have re-aimed their existing fixtures--
Okay.
Since the last meeting. Since the last meeting.
Okay. Okay, good. We'll go check it out.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
All right. I guess I'll move to table.
I'll second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Okay. That's our tabled agenda. We will now move into the public hearing portion of the evening. Sorry about that. And we have two items on the agenda. If you're not familiar with our process, the applicants will come forward to the -- one of these two tables. They can pick which one they want, present their application. The board will ask questions, and then we'll open it up for public input. If you are not here and you're one of the millions watching on our streaming services from around the planet, you can submit comments electronically. Go to the Penfield website. It's penfield.org. There should be a link to this meeting on the webpage. And alternatively, you may call in at 585-340-8771. I should make sure the country code is one for all our international watchers, viewers. So Doug, would you read the first application?
All right. Application number one, McMahon LaRue Associates, 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of Jaclyn Odell, request under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2 and Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final subdivision and site plan approval to subdivide a 0.97 acre parcel into two lots at 1395 Shoe Craft Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. Lot one will include the existing dwelling, and lot two will be designed for new single-family dwelling. The properties now are formerly owned by Jaclyn Odell and Zone Residential, R120. Application 25P-0009, SBL 094.19-1-1.2.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name's Ian Cookman with McMahon LaRue, and I have with me the applicant Jackie Odell, who currently resides at the dwelling depicted in lot one of our site plans here, and is proposing to build another dwelling on a subdivided lot two that we're showing here. I believe we submitted, as part of this application, the architectural plans provided by GLA Architects, a modest two-bedroom ranch with a two-car garage, stepped finished-floor elevation from the proposed garage elevation, finished floor of the garage. It's a pretty straightforward project. The original house was originally on septic that has been abandoned and is now connected via sewer lateral to the main trunk line down Shoe Craft. The proposed lot will also be connected with sanitary sewer with traditional water sewer connections, as depicted here. We're really only showing the removal of one tree, I believe, and we're showing two additional proposed trees to provide a little bit more aesthetic appeal to the roadside. We've reviewed engineering comments. We've responded in kind with a response to comments. Really no major issues, really just a couple of minor grading issues with contours and tie-in to the storm sewer, which I believe we've addressed with our latest plan set that has been submitted. Other than that, we did receive DRC comments from the county, and those are just the regular run-of-the-mill comments that we normally see, so no game changers in that regard. Like I said, pretty straightforward concept that we're showing here or design. We're asking for conditional approval tonight, if possible, but certainly want to open it up to your comments and feedback first. So with that, any questions, comments, or concerns?
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Kelly, do you want to start, if you have any questions?
Sure. So the existing home, what is the plan for the home on the existing lot one?
So Jackie plans to build this house, move into it, and then either sell the existing house, or open it up into the rental market, depending on what the market bears. So a little bit question, but definitely moving into the house that we're proposing to build. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. I'm having trouble locating. Maybe I'm just not looking at the right one. Where would the entrance be for lot two?
So if we look at sheet two--
Oh, okay.
We can see the driveway with--
Yep.
-- an 18-foot-wide turnaround abutting the adjacent parcel.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay. Don't really have any. Just seems pretty straightforward. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Jim?
You good, Mike?
I agree. It's pretty straightforward. I think -- I know that you submitted new revised plans. I haven't had a chance to look through them yet. Most of them are pretty simple, technical things that, you know, could be handled and pre-mile our stage, so if the board's up to it, we don't -- I don't think have any major concerns, so.
Okay. All right. Bob, any questions?
No.
Any questions from the audience? Let me check and see if there's any comments or call-ins. Doesn't seem to be. Looks pretty straightforward to me, too. So thank you for your presentation, and we will move on to the next one.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay or go or over.
Thank you.
You're also the--
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Second item.
All right. So you're going to be back in in just a second for the second item. Also, item number two, McMahon LaRue Associates, 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of Arnold DiPietro, request under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final subdivision approval to subdivide a 30.014 acre lot into five lots with three new single-family dwellings at 35 Apollonia Lane, Fairport, New York, 14450. The property is now or formerly owned by Arnold DiPietro and Zone Rural Agricultural, RA2, application 25P-0010, SBL 126.01-1-52.1.
Okay. Welcome back.
Okay. I'm back. So this one is a little bit more complicated than the last one. This subdivision has been before this board at least two or three times in the past, decade or two. And Arnold DiPietro is the resident at 35 Apollonia Lane, up on the hill. Nice, beautiful brick house. And what he's proposing is to subdivide the land behind him, which is currently cultivated land, agricultural field, into three new buildable lots for geocohomes to build, three more houses, similar in kind to the houses that are already being built out there as we speak. All requiring onsite septic treatment. We've got two conventional systems, and we have a tight soil modified system ironically at the top of the hill. These things happen with the health department sometimes. We are showing fire turnaround hammerhead at the end of the driveway. We don't have necessarily architectural footprints yet, so we're showing modest shoebox rectangles with end-load garages, which is what the residents in this area prefer from an aesthetic standpoint from the road. It's a gentle sloping topography, so it does accommodate well for a walkout basement type of finished-floor elevation configuration with a swale running along the front of the lots. There is an existing pond downstream of the site, closer to the wetland area, that will be modified as part of this site plan and expanded to accommodate the increase in impervious area, something that we're actively working with the town to accommodate and figure out as this has been kind of a multi-phased project. We're just trying to get our arms around the overall hydrology of the site. We're also in the process of working with the fire marshal to figure out what they want to see as far as fire hydrants with this longer private drive configuration, new hydrant, private hydrant. Will the water authority extend hydrant on a private drive, or will sprinkler systems be required here? These are all things that we're actively working through. I did see that we did have a comment that a wetland needs to be delineated out here. That's something that has been submitted to the DEC for jurisdictional determination. They have come back, and they are taking jurisdiction because it's greater than 12 acres. There's already a conservation easement out here, so it's well-known that this is a sensitive, you know, a sensitive hydrology and forested wetland area. So our desktop review and intuition says that the wetland delineation is along the existing forest line there, and everything south, or I'm sorry, west of that forest line is cultivated, so it's likely not a wetland. So I think we've made an assumption that we're well outside that 100-foot buffer, but we are in the process of confirming that with a delineation, and that's something that will be amended as part of this plan set as we move forward. But at this time, we really want to just get the board's opinion of the project and open it up for public comment.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah.
Jimmy, you want to start?
I think generally, it appears that you're in the process of addressing all the PRC comments that you got.
Yeah.
But that you have quite a bit of work yet to do before we have something that we can really consider as a preliminary final submission. Do you agree?
Um--
It's okay. You can say yes.
I don't know. Yeah. I guess, sure. Maybe you can expand on that a little bit more? What would it look like to be a more complete application?
Well, I mean, we wouldn't be in a position to consider the application until, you know, the wetland. You never know what's going to happen with wetlands. You need to work out some things with the fire marshal. If that means that you're going to extend some private mains and put some private hydrants in, then you've got to have access to those, and, you know, there's a bit of work to be done yet, so.
Okay.
Just kind of getting that on the public record.
Gotcha. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, as far as the fire safety, whatever direction we go, it's not going to impact the concept that we're proposing now. And the wetlands, yeah, there's a chance that that could blow up in our face and, you know, require us to maybe modify this lot configuration a little bit, so I would agree with you there.
Expansion of the pond and, you know, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
There are -- the last time that this subdivision was in, there was a few different unresolved issues. Have they been addressed and resolved to this point?
So I believe the big item was that the road needed to be milled and repaved, and some gutter work needed to be redone. My understanding is it's coming. I believe maybe Monday they might be starting to do all that.
Okay.
There was conversations with Arnold and the home builder there, and I believe Monday was the start of doing the road reconstruction.
Okay.
So as far as the other applications, once this is kind of done, that would be in compliance with those requirements.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Any other questions from the board?
How much site work do you anticipate on this moving X number of yards of material, adding, taking off-site? What would you anticipate?
We're pretty close to an earthwork balance with our grading plan. I have not fully accounted for what still needs to come out to expand that pond, so if anything, there will be an excess of material that can be-- an excess of material that can be, you know, lost somewhere on site. So we don't anticipate trucking material off the site, just losing it somewhere on the site.
Okay. And there's no variances required?
Nope. All the, the lots have been configured to meet the rural agricultural RA2 district zoning requirements, which I believe is two acres.
Two acre, yeah.
Yeah, two acres.
Yep, that's it.
Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this application? Let me just check our world wide web for international and remote viewers. Nothing, nothing there. Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Sounds good. Thank you, guys.
All right. So I believe that ends the public hearing portion of the evening and we will call the hearing closed and move into new business.
New business? Okay. First new business?
Unless, do we want to?
Discuss the applications?
Get those, yeah.
Okay.
Couple minutes, right?
Yep.
First one. Any reason why we can't just say?
It's an unlisted action. It's relatively minor. I'd be happy to draft a negative declaration and part two, part three for you guys to sign off, for you to sign off on.
Okay. I'd say let's do that.
There's no real, well.
It's your call, Kelly.
Yes. Yeah. I'll make a motion to do exactly what Doug just said.
Yep. So a motion for a negative declaration and we'll authorize the chairman to sign up.
Yeah, I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
And then maybe approval?
A draft approval resolution, yeah.
Motion for a draft approval resolution.
Got a second?
Yep. I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Yeah, there'll be no atypical resolution conditions for that application.
Okay. Second one. Obviously table.
Yeah, table pending the outstanding items. So working with the fire marshal.
You got to speak up louder.
Table to permit the applicant to.
Respond to.
Respond to the PRC comments. That works.
Yes. So.
I'll second.
Moved by Burton, I think.
Okay, thank you.
I think it was.
Seconded by Aiken.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Okay. New business.
All right. First new business item is 1600 Dublin Road, Oak and Apple. So Oak and Apple would like to peer before the board to discuss modification of a condition that was put in place as part of the 2016 approval resolution. The condition is condition 26C, which was not made as, or was not required by the board as a mitigation for any negative impact, but was something that was initially stated.
It was a volunteered.
It was a volunteered condition. In our resolution states per the representations of the applicant, there shall be no outdoor live music, outdoor speakers, live music on the premises. They're seeking to modify that condition to allow live music within the sitery. It would be subject to the town's noise ordinance. It was, staff requested that the applicant provide a sound study for noise generation based on live music at the sitery compared to noise generation from like Route 250 and Suites Corners Road. They did provide that sound study. The general results of the sound study was that it would be within that sort of, as Ella had described, that three to five decibel range where it is slightly louder than ambient, but not typically perceptible to most people.
Okay.
So to that end, staff has prepared a draft of a resolution. We would just modify that condition, remove that condition and replace it with a condition that says any outdoor live music would be required to comply with the town's chapter 250, section 7.6, what we commonly refer to as our noise ordinance. It's the noise section of the general provision code, of the zoning code.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Any issues with this proposal?
Not at all.
No.
Somebody want to move to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next item.
All right. New business item number two is 47 to 54 Lee Dale Drive. So this is kind of a complicated one. It's a lot line shift and a lot merge. So I'll actually have, Matt, if you could pull up, it's under, yes, this will actually provide a good representation. It's not shown here. It's what they're looking to do. Matt, it's under the, I think, action items in the 2025. So the ultimate goal is the owner of 54 and 47, Lee Dale Drive is the same. 54 Lee Dale Drive is currently a vacant lot. 47 has a single-family residence. They would like to merge those two lots together. Also as part of it, and it's not shown on our GIS, back in 2022, the owners filed, I believe, quitclaim deeds to effectuate sort of a transfer of a portion of 50 Lee Dale to 54. The end result is that kind of happened, it was just post-COVID. There were still some things going on with the county. We didn't get notified about that until 2024. It is not reflected in our mapping, but is now reflected in the updated tax mapping put out by the Monterey County Real Property. So they would look to merge that little piece that is now tentatively addressed 50B Lee Dale Drive into 54. So ultimately, 47, 54, and that back portion, 50B, would be merged into a single parcel through sort of a combination lot line shift with 50 and a merging of 47 and 54.
And then it'll be a compliant lot because the issue was the boathouse, my understanding?
Correct. Yes.
Accessory use without a.
Originally, they came in looking to do the lot line shift. I don't remember the year, but ultimately they had looked at going to the zoning board for use variance to allow the boathouse to be on the vacant, merged into the vacant lot without a primary use. The zoning administrator determined since there wasn't going to be a primary structure but would be an accessory structure, that it was not compliant with zoning. The end result here would be two zoning compliant lots.
Okay. Any concerns on engineering department?
We do not have any concerns.
Okay. Any concerns from board?
Makes less sense to me.
Somebody want to move to approve it?
Bring things into compliance and fix this at tax.
Yeah, so moved.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
All right. Anything else on our agenda?
That was all I had for you tonight.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We will adjourn.